Call to order, the special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, February 26, 2018 will be called to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderwoman Finlayson.
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, first of all, I'd like to give thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. I ask for your blessings for our entire city. Dear God, please grant us guidance and wisdom. Help us to exercise good judgment, make wise decisions, and impartial decisions, which will benefit all of our residents. Help us to be filled with the spirit of cooperation and collaboration, so that the results will be a successful and prosperous city. These and other blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
All our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we get started. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderwoman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Here.
Alderwoman Pinnell Charles.
Here.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderwoman Henson.
Present.
Alderman Savage.
Here.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
So before we get started, I just want to thank or introduce Richard Melnick, our new city attorney. And we really want to thank Gary Elson for stepping in, and he steps in for us all the time, and we couldn't survive without him, so he's done an amazing job, so I just want to do a little. So Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose say nay. Motion passes. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next items on the agenda, well, actually, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation regarding the Eddie McGowan Day.
Okay, can the McGowan family please come to the front, please? So we lost one of Annapolis' favorite sons, and this town is a lot worse off for it. He was a great man. I was lucky enough to know him, so we are going to do a proclamation for Eddie McGowan Day, okay?
Where is Eddie McGowan, an ever-present leader of the water and land community who provided endless hours of entertainment for the citizens of Annapolis, and whose name became synonymous with the Irish music in the city, the state of Maryland and beyond, as members of the wildly popular The Robins Band? And whereas Eddie championed music and the arts, founded the wildly successful Annapolis Irish Festival showcasing exceptional regional talent that attracted thousands of music fans to crowdfund and raise funds for charity? And whereas Eddie, an accomplished athlete, lived his life promoting physical fitness and creative energy, founded the famous Santa Speedo Run, I'm sure some of you guys have been on. Through the historic district that has benefited children during the holidays, whereas Eddie loved the Chesapeake Bay, its local waterways, earned a captain's license in taking people on the bay for a great day of fishing and fun. Whereas Eddie was an admired coach of children's sports teams and gymnastics, and used his mild charisma to light a room and touch people's lives in the most memorable of ways. And whereas Eddie battled aloes gallantly and graced for several years, whereas Eddie was a loving husband of Tracy, wonderful father of Devon, Mallory, and Nolan, and beloved son of Clyde and Brenda. Whereas Eddie and his band's music festival events and legacy will continue to bring entertainment and happiness to the people of Annapolis for years to come. Now, therefore, I, Alderwoman Buckley, Mayor of the City of Annapolis, of Maryland, do hereby proclaim March 9th as Eddie McGowan Day in the City of Annapolis. Look out.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item related to a city council citation regarding Kunta Kinte.
Alderwoman, uh, 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 Shinnick Henson, please.
Thank you. It, um, it is just, I just wanted to read and commemorate the words that are on the Kunta Kinte plaque that's there in Hopkins Plaza. When we were working out the terms for Market House, one of the things that you heard us raise was making sure that there was no interference with that plaque, making sure that it wasn't covered up, and that we honored and we commemorated the space. I don't know if everyone has had the opportunity to see it and to view it and to read its words, but in Black History Month, I wanted to read those words into the record of the city just to make sure we honor our ancestors and those who have come before us and created this space for us. On the plaque, it reads, "This memorial commemorates the arrival in Annapolis of Kunta Kinte, Alex Haley's ancestor, as told in his book Roots. The arrival was not a voluntary one. Kunta Kinte was among 140 Africans forced into the hold of the slave ship Lord Ligonier. The ship left the Gambia River in Africa on July 6, 1767, and cleared customs here in Annapolis on September 29th. At that time, its cargo was reduced to just 98 survivors. The Africans were sold into slavery on October 7th. An advertisement for the sale appeared in the Maryland Gazette. The original can be viewed at the nearby Maryland Archives. Millions of African men, women, and children were taken from their homeland and forcibly migrated to the New World under horrible conditions. People were packed into ships for months with very little space and care. Many died on the journey known as the Middle Passage. Kunta Kinte was one of those who survived the Middle Passage and told his story, which was shared with the world by his descendant Alex Haley. This memorial is dedicated to our country's African ancestors whose names, unlike Kunta Kinte, are lost forever. It is hoped that the memorial will be a place for learning, a place for story sharing, a place for inspiration, a place for reflection and healing. Thank you."
So well said. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with the quarterly report from the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
Members of HACCA, please come forward. So before, thank you so much. Before we hear from you, I'd just like to report to the people who are here some exciting news that happened last week. We had a visit from, for the first time in a long time, the mayor, the HACCA executive director, the HACCA board chair, and several representatives from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development were around a table talking about the future of HACCA. I want to thank Beverly for her leadership of HACCA and her help to bring us all together to discuss the issues important to this community. I'd also like to thank Sandra Chapman and the HACCA board, the HACCA board chair for attending and her leadership as well. There were several high-ranking leaders there, including our region's administrator, Joseph DeFelice, our division director, Russell DeSouza, and Carol Payne, the director of HUD's Baltimore office. And I can tell you, it was a love fest. We had a great, great meeting, and at the end of the meeting, it was decided that they believe that HACCA is in better shape than it has ever been. There are currently no HUD restrictions on HACCA. They have no major issues with HACCA. The reports are right on target, and they are ready to support HACCA with its initiatives. It was very clear to me, and all of us in that meeting, that HUD credits Beverly Wilborn with turning the agency around, and I'm grateful for her leadership and hard work. We are lucky to have you, Beverly. Thank you so much. We'll be announcing nominations soon. I want to thank the people that stepped off the board for their hard work, because it's hard to be on a board, and I appreciate the time that they gave us. The new announcements will be really exciting, and we're looking forward to moving forward with public housing. We cannot be a great community until we make a great community for everybody. Beverly believes in the mission of public housing, and it's going to be amazing when we're finished. All right, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all the house members for this opportunity to present our report to you. We can't really have a strong housing authority without the cool support of the City of Annapolis, and I appreciate all the support that you give. Let me introduce the people on presenting with me. To my left is Patrick Kostic. He's one of our RAD consultants. We'll be hearing some of them. Most of you do know Sandra Chapman, the chairman of our board, and I join the mayor to thank our board for their leadership. And we have one of our other board members, Jackie Wells. I thank her as well. Before we start on our presentation, I'll first ask my chairmen and board members to stay behind and make any comments.
I would just like to say.
Turn on your mic.
I would just like to say it's a pleasure to be back in front of you again. It's been quite a while. I'm happy to say that things have picked up so much since the last time we were here. As the mayor stated, HUD gave us a raving review. We still have a long way to go, but we've taken it step by step, and we will reach the top step. There's no doubt about that. And again, I will say it's because of Beverly. She's worked more than overtime, triple time, and the board members have been very active, stayed fast in the commitment of making sure we have the best public housing that we can have. So we're looking forward, as Ms. Wilborn said, in working with the city to make it even better with your help.
Ms. Wilborn? I think that, that Beverly.
I'm, I'm just happy that Beverly Wilborn is with the Annapolis Housing Authority. So I look forward to working with her.
Thank you so much. We'll make a presentation and be brief and be open to questions, because I do want to answer those questions that you want answered. But before we start, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the recent passing of one of our commissioners, Corey Johnson. Commissioner Johnson joined HACCA's board at a difficult time. He had a lot of hard choices to make immediately. He stepped up and gave it his all, and we so appreciate it. He did exceedingly well for a board member who just got engaged in the process. And I just wanted to take a moment, and hopefully, his family knows how much we are indebted to the work that he did for us, and so I wanted to acknowledge his passing. So we have, you have the presentation, I believe, and it is in two parts. The first will be the current status of HACCA, and the second part will be where we're going in the future under redevelopment and RAD. And I'll be the primary presenter on the first portion, and Patrick and myself will talk through the RAD portions. So as has been mentioned, HACCA was placed as a troubled agency in 2017, and as a result, you enter into a recovery plan with HUD. We recently, in January, submitted a quarterly report to HUD on the progress that we have made on the recovery plan. And the recovery plan is essentially your regulator saying, okay, these are your deficiency areas. This is what you need to concentrate on. And it really covered every aspect of the business. It covered the finance, it covered the governance, the board, it covered Section 8, it covered the property conditions, it covered the property occupancy, okay? It covered all the major areas of public housing. And the quarterly report, then, was a detailed response to a series of subcategories that was laid out in the recovery plan. And we have posted that quarterly report on our website, so it is public information. HUD has not responded in writing, but at the meeting stated it was thorough, on point, and addressed the vast majority of our deficiencies. It is essentially saying, we understand what you're saying to us. We understand where our shortcomings are, and we're putting the systems in place to correct them. Now, clearly, in a short time, you cannot overcome the overall conditions of aged properties, of systems, or even financial constraints. But you can begin to put the process back, make yourself compliant, train your staff, get the right IT systems, automate where you can, and that's where we are. So we're not, as I like to say, we're not out of the woods fully, but we're definitely well down the road to get there. And that's what HUD said to us, stay the course. That was really the message, and they wanted to make that message clear to the mayor, stay the course. This is where you need to be. You need to continue the work that you're doing. So I want to, though, talk more specifically about some of the troubled areas that we have to still work through. As the mayor indicated, we have some vacancies on the board, and he is addressing those aggressively. And we also have, as most public housing authorities do, in a time of budget cuts, we have a very tight budget profile. The thing that HUD said to us was, one, make sure you know where all your money's going. Make sure that you're reporting accurately. Make sure that you use your systems of record appropriately, so that you are actually, at any given time, you can pull a report and see exactly where you are. Those things we have done. That is, that's doable immediately. We've done those things. The harder thing is changing your overall balance sheet, okay? But one of the ways that you do so is maximize your subsidy, right? That's about vacancies. That's about just making sure you are most efficient in Section 8. That's what we're working on currently. One of the big areas that we have are vacant properties. And I've been talking with my board, and I've promised the mayor that by the end of this spring, by June, all the boards will be off in public housing. We will do what we have to do. We have put vendors on, we're lined up to put our vendors in place and in every community, except for new towns where we are about to go through redevelopment, and some of those units are offline. They are no longer going to be occupied. We will be taking, making sure that we are running at full capacity or very close on a regular basis. That is a major issue. It helps your financial profile, but it also helps your standing in the community. It helps the people who come home every day feel better about themselves when it's not boarded up units throughout the property. So that's something that we'll be working toward, and we've already sort of lined up. The next thing I'll say on property condition, I know that we have had a bad, a difficult reputation on responding to resident complaints on property condition. That is something that I truly regret, because it takes a while to overcome that reticence of residents to call. But if I have one message to say, it is this. We take, I take, my obligation to provide safe, sanitary, and decent housing as my first obligation. I can only do so if residents will come back, give us one more chance, call our maintenance line, because I track work orders weekly and monthly. We get over 450 work orders a month. We, about half of them fall into an emergency category. We clear emergencies within 24 to 48 hours. We check them on a weekly basis. But if you don't call it in, I don't know it. I can only use a system that I can track, that I can pull reports, that I can see. And I know that residents have lost faith in our ability to do so, but I would ask them to give us that one more chance. Call back on the call numbers. If you haven't heard from us in a few weeks, you need to call it back in, because I'm checking on a regular basis. On our normal routine matters, we try and clear them out within 30 to 45 days. We're probably at 85%, but we're trying to get those numbers better each month. What will happen? What we will do is start to publish these numbers in the next 30 to 60 days, because we believe it is important for people to see the progress that's being made, and we will stand by them. We've already been sharing them with our board member, board members on a monthly basis, but we just wanted to make sure that they're real, we're tracking, we're seeing. Where's the, where's the real jam up? What do we get regularly? And I will tell you, we have old pipes. We get a lot of leaks. We get a lot of clogs. We have to go and, those are emergencies. We go and fix those. I also tell you, we get a lot of lockouts. That's an emergency. But we're going to sort of raise the price on that, because there's a lot of that going on. We have some heating issues, but we're trying to see, where's the routine? Where's the, what happens that we can do, maybe preventative, and get ahead of that, of some of that? So in that way, we are hopeful that some of the issues, the pressing issues of safe and sanitary housing, if you call in for mold, we immediately respond. If you, any infestation, we immediately respond. We have on, on call our vendors, but I don't know it if you don't call it in, because that's the way I track it. That's the way I know if we're making the progress. So we're not by any means out of the woods on that issue, but we are well on our way, because we have made that commitment, and we are tracking it and counting it and making sure that things are getting done. And when they're not, and if they're not, and if there are instances where I think we're here and we're somewhere else, I'm more than happy to go back and make that correction. I'm more than happy to go out and see what happens. I, myself, go out to some of our calls, just so that I can see what story is. And so I urge everyone, as you're hearing from residents, to ask them to give us one more chance, to call it in. We'll do what we can to immediately fix the problem. But let me be clear, I can't do maintenance, I can't get maintenance to get me awake, clear on properties that are 40, 50, in the case of Eastport Terrace, 65 years old and in need of major rehab. That's where redevelopment comes into play, okay? And that's what we have RAD. That's what we have selected as the redevelopment tool. And the reasons for that, we'll go through. But the reality is, there's only so far we can get with maintenance, right? At a point, real estate needs some capital infusion, some major system rehabs, changing out, renewal. Even the layouts may need to be changed. Some obsolescence comes into play. And that's where we are with probably about five of our developments, right? And we are committed to taking that through so that we have in each of our communities, communities that all of us can be proud of. And so I'm going to turn it over to Pat, and he and I will talk through RAD. But before I do so, I'm happy to answer any questions on our current condition.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming to the council and presenting Housing Authority to all of us as a group. The recovery plan, did that include having to repay any of the money that was subject to the audit? What's the status of that?
Thank you for asking. That was the one little, you know, bad part of my HUD visit. They have not responded fully, as you know, and I'll recap for everyone. I think it was a 2015, 2016 audit that found discrepancies in the way HACCA procurement was, was implemented as well as grant, a grant program under the Ross Grant. And there was a $3 million, I believe it was a $3 million dollar of contracts that had not been appropriately procured. HACCA was given the opportunity to say, well, even though they were not appropriately procured, the ultimate price was still fair and reasonable, right? It was sort of the second bite of the apple, right? Had you appropriately procured, that was your safe harbor, that it was fair and reasonable. But, oh, you didn't do that, so now let's see if you can prove otherwise that it's fair and reasonable. And so the HACCA submitted a while back documentation showing fair and reasonable. HUD indicated at the meeting that the Office of Inspector General was in negotiations with our field office. Our field office was advocating that we have shown at least a good chunk of that to be fair and reasonable. Office of Inspector General, not so much, apparently. And the word that he gave us was that it was right around $2 million that was still being disputed. So this will go in two stages, from what I understand. HUD Baltimore office will first sort of argue our case and try and get down to the details of what documentation was missing. They are, HUD will ask the OIG to give the current HACCA leadership, and they made it clear that we've had a change in leadership. They believe that the current leaders will be able to respond, to give us another shot at responding, if that is, if that is a possibility under OIG. In other words, if there's something more that OIG would want to see. Otherwise, we would have to go into a repayment agreement. But that was not covered under the recovery plan.
Have they given you any indication when that process might wrap itself up, and you all might have an answer?
No, they, he did not. He did not.
We were all here the other night, you, myself, Alderwoman Tierney, and Alderman Peon, very late with the Community Development Committee. You, we were noticing there that some of the block grant funds had been just zeroed out by the current federal administration for the next cycle, so we had to then give that preamble of not knowing, you know, don't base your program on this funding being continued, a continued source. What has your capital improvement budget been like, and your operating budget been like from, from your federal partners?
In the proposed budget by the president, the capital fund is zero. I believe they've, they've eliminated. That's the capital dollars, right, to keep your real estate going. Zero for public housing across the nation. No public housing agency can withstand that, right? We already all have. We already all have aging housing stock. That is the fundamental problem that we have. And now that portion is zeroed out. In addition, the operating dollars have now a, a, we get a prorated portion. Right now, we're getting, if a hundred percent, if a hundred percent is what we need to operate, they give us some prorated amount, Congress allocates some prorated amount. And I think right now, we're in the eighty-five, eighty-seven or something like that. It would be, go down to sixty. I mean, a huge cuts in the public housing safety net. I, I can tell you, for HACA, we are one hundred percent funded by the federal government with smaller, much smaller dollars of a roughly eleven million dollar budget. Ninety-nine point, ninety-nine percent is coming from the federal government. If this budget stands, public housing across the nation is in peril. It's just that simple, it's just that straightforward.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
That's great. I have a question, you mentioned the aging structures and then inevitably, there's, there's maintenance for those aging structures. So where is that in your budget? Is that in your operating budget or is it a percent of, well, it can't be of capital, so I was just curious.
Right, it is part of our operating budget, it's a big part of our operating budget, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What has been done to improve public safety in general? Large question, but you don't have.
Yeah, very large, right.
I don't expect to link the answer, but give us some idea what's going on. We don't have anything if we don't have, if, if it's not a safe environment.
I, I fully agree with that. We have hired a safety manager and she is a retired police officer from DC Metropolitan Police Department and she's working with the APD. But let me be clear, we have to work closely with the Annapolis Police Department in order to address safety on HACA properties as in everywhere else in the city. We at HACA can work with the police, can enforce our lease and any violations, but I want to be clear. Lease violations, try, trying to control crime through lease violations is really, it, it doesn't work in that way. You have to control crime by the action, right? If somebody is committing crime on the property, then that can lead immediately to not only a, an arrest, but also an eviction, right? It, you have to go after the activity. Not merely that there is some other small lease, there's some other lease violation and try and hope that then you take it through eviction because that just simply isn't, that isn't the path to address the criminal activity. So we have to work with the Annapolis Police Department to address crime when it's happening, as it's happening. And I've been talking with my safety director and we're sort of talking through, what are we going to do to give some visibility in the properties of the police presence because that is a big deterrent? And what are we going to do to quickly identify criminal behavior? And then we can work it through if they are either on the lease, many times they're not, but if they are associated with a unit, then we can evict the party that's still harboring that person or we can ban. But again, it is, it is dealing with the criminal activity with the Annapolis Police Department.
Do you know how many people are on the banning list now approximately?
I don't, I don't.
I mean, are we talking hundreds, are we talking about fifty, twenty?
Yeah, we're not talking hundreds, but I would say it's in the twenty, thirty range from the last time I saw it, yeah.
Do you have enough cameras or other means of, electronic means of enforcement that, that you might be, might be necessary? I realize that's not the long-term answer to public safety, but in the meantime, I mean, we've got to do something about crimes that are committed in, in these areas and, and they can be, of course, a big help. Do we have enough of that sort of thing?
We have a pretty robust camera system up. One of the questions we've had with the APD, and I don't want to, I, I don't, I can't speak on the things that I really don't know because you do need someone with a law enforcement background to really determine like what's most effective and what isn't. And one of the things we have talked about is gaining access to those camera feeds regularly. Because it's not only do you have enough camera, then do you have enough people looking at what the camera captured, right? I mean, it's a combination of those things. And then who's looking at it and what are they going to do with it? So, I mean, you got the camera, but that isn't the thing that, that doesn't do anything until somebody looks at it, sees something that's happening, decides that there's something that should be done and on down the line.
We're quite familiar with that problem on, here on, on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, thanks to all of you for your work on the board. It's really nice to hear some positive news from the Housing Authority. So I do have two questions. One, is there a way for people to get off the banning list if they feel like they're put on there inappropriately?
There is. The banning list was, the banning list rules were negotiated in a settlement with the ACLU. And so there's a very explicit process of what gets on the banning list and how you get off the banning list. So it's what activity you are charged with determines how long you're banned and then there's a process to get off.
Okay, good. My last question is, what steps have you taken or will you take to getting better compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the transparency laws, the state transparency law?
So there is, was a complaint filed for, against HACA regarding a closed meeting pertaining to deliberations on Newtown twenty development. Our position is, we, we follow the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act, our read of it, my read of it, and my council's read of it, says that you can have a closed meeting, you can have a closed meeting or you can have an open meeting adjourned it to a closed meeting. In the instance of the meeting where I have a complaint, it was pertaining to a closed meeting that was properly noticed January fifth, probably three weeks before that meeting. It ended up, and it was going to be as part of the open meeting, it would then be closed because we were going to have the board meeting and then we were going to close it. But the board meeting was canceled. So now there was just the meeting for the, the closed meeting. Our reading of the closed meeting act, of the Open Meetings Act is that you have the option, and it says, to have a closed meeting or to close an open meeting. We had a closed meeting that was properly noticed. And as soon as that happened, when we canceled, I not only put the notice back on my website, I actually sent out emails to people that typically come to say, look, the meeting is canceled and oh, by the way, that closed meeting is going to still take place the next day. So we have submitted our interpretation to the Open Meetings Act. We have not heard back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wilborn and your stellar team for coming here tonight and presenting to us. I did have the opportunity to meet with your new safety manager who you introduced me to at the bi-monthly Eastport Working Together meeting that we've had since October and I thank you so much for that. Have you had any regular dialogue or meetings with our city police chief regarding some of the public safety issues that you have outlined?
We have, I have not recently had meetings with the police chief. I have asked my, my safety manager, sort of get acclimated and rather than have me, who I don't have the safety background, why don't you figure out what you all really believe we ought to be doing? And then let's present it so that you on the HACA side know what it is we can and cannot do and the police, working with the police chief, we can come up, and the police department, it's not just the chief, we can then come up with a workable plan, right? It is, what can we get done with the resources that we have and who is able to do what? So I'm, I'm really looking for the guidance from those who have a policing background to inform me on what can be done and how we can work best together. So that's where, that's where that saves.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think it would behoove us all to, to start having those regular meetings and dialogue. I think that would be extremely important. I know the young lady is new to HACA, but I think the sooner the better would be great. And I think, just, just as an aside, your, your background, coming from DC government as well as being an attorney, I think has helped tremendously in how you all have moved forward since the day you came on May first of last year. So we continue to thank you, you all, for what you're doing.
Thank you. I too want to thank you for bringing your updated report to us this evening. I've heard it through the grapevine that a contractor has been decided. I know that's probably a off-the-record question, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to share with the residents at least where we are in that process for Newtown twenty.
Thank you. In that closed meeting, we were given, I was given authority to begin negotiations with a partner and until we come to agreement on the deal terms, we don't have a deal, so we just want to make sure. But we're doing that as quickly as possible. Here's, here's how we want to proceed. We're trying to get the deal terms nailed down as quickly as possible and then plan a meeting with Newtown twenty residents and with our resident advisory board, the RAB, a sit-down meeting where we go over all the deal terms and all the issues and say how we're going to proceed. And then at that time, probably at the next board meeting, or we might, you know, issue a release as to where we stand on the process. But it's important to me that the folks who are most impacted, the residents of Newtown, have an opportunity first to hear it, to ask all the questions they want to ask, that I hear what their concerns are before anything else goes forward. So we are hopeful to get those things done in the next couple of weeks. We're pressing very hard, Patrick knows that we are. So as quickly as we can, we'll come to agreement. And then we don't have much time because in May, sometime in May, I don't think they have a firm date, the low-income housing tax credit application must be in. So we're, we're moving down that road as quickly as possible.
Can I just add that we learned a lot from the last two properties that we developed? And we are being very careful about the contracts that are done now, moving us forward. The residents have a lot of complaints and we're going to really look at those complaints from the past so that we don't have those same complaints again.
Well, thank you for saying that because I'm, I'm sure some of us who were here during those last contractual agreements remember well the pitfalls and the responses from the residents. So I'm really happy to hear that, you know, those are still in mind so we don't go down that road again. So again, thank you.
So I just want to say, there are only seven hundred and fifty housing, public housing units that HACA are in charge of, so that's seven hundred and fifty. So if we look at the city and we, we see where problems are, it's in areas that we haven't invested. So you see the areas that we have invested in, if any of you have been to Annapolis Gardens, near WNIV, or if any of you have been to Bloomsbury Square as you come into the city, those issues, they don't have the same issues in the areas that have been forgotten. So, and they haven't been invested in in fifty, sixty years. We have to find the money and the apparatus to get them invested in so that we can move forward. So thank you so much. And that leads to the RAD talk.
Okay, all right, I'm going to, we've talked about much of it, but we'll do a, a quick overview of RAD and answer any questions pertaining to that. Patrick?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Given the hour on the clock, I'll give you my best and quickest overview of this and we'll answer any questions and we'll go from there. I had the privilege of working in the last administration at the Department of Housing and Urban Development under Secretary Sean Donovan and I can say two things about public housing. One, it's a hard job, it's a very hard job. And two, HUD doesn't make it any easier to do your job. And this is not just something in Annapolis. And I know you've had your struggles and we wondered when I was at HUD, but it seems like you're right-footing that. But the root of the issue frankly is not here in Annapolis. The root of the issue is we haven't provided proper funding from the Congress, I'm going to slide that one uphill, and HUD. We weren't ever able to keep up with the required funding. So the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program basically was President Obama saying to us, all right, you knuckleheads, we haven't been able to do a sufficient job in providing funding, let's come up with something better and different. And so this was the response that was offered by the Obama administration. In a nutshell, it's a little bit different than how you did the financing for, I call them the ovaries, Bloomsbury, Annapolis Gardens. And it, it retains some important commitments to what we think public housing is all about. But it is at root a program that enables you to take the public housing funding the way it is. And I actually feel a little bit hopeful and confident that the budget that's proposed by this administration will not materialize given the budget, budget resolution in the Congress. But what we do under the RAD program is take the public housing that's on the table and convert it to another system, the Section Eight system, that's been around for forty, forty-five years. And it's the way that all other forms of affordable housing get done in this country. Public housing's been off over here, dependent upon an annual contribution from the Congress, operating funds, capital funds, you get a prorated amount, you do what you can. It's usually not a sufficient amount to do the job you need to do. So what RAD does is basically takes the money that's on the table and essentially capitalizes that as a contract that's committed over the next twenty years. So we don't have to go to the Congress every year. Beverly doesn't have to wait to get the answer every year, how much he's going to get, we know. So you convert the subsidy stream from conventional public housing to a platform that you do, as I said, every other kind of affordable housing in this country. So it's no longer public housing as an anomalous system. So that's the RAD program in a nutshell on the financing level that allows you to go out and compete for the tax credits that the state of Maryland will allocate or any other gap financing, just like any other for-profit or nonprofit developer. The ability of HACA to direct that now is afforded under the RAD program. The, I think the important part of what we tried to do under RAD was to make sure that it worked for the residents. And a lot of the feedback had been, well, you've had some other, other programs at HUD that we put money in and fewer public housing units result. There's less units out there that are affordable and residents have fewer choices. The HOPE six program, Choice Neighborhoods program, maybe you've heard of some of those. So one of the things that was, that meant absolute commitment on the part of the secretary was that if we have a new way to finance public housing, we make a one-for-one commitment. If you have seven hundred and eighty-three units today and you're going to use this program, you're going to end up with seven hundred and eighty-three long-term. 783 long-term affordable housing units. So, it's that commitment that we don't lose anything in the redevelopment process. Residents have the right to remain in the housing, there'll be some temporary relocation at Newtown due to construction, but they have the absolute right to come back to the development. There's no rescreening, like, oh, we've changed the rules, it's a new program, we're gonna have a different way of looking at it, that's not allowed under the RAD program. The residents who have, gonna live life under the public housing world, have learned certain processes and responsibilities and rights, and we basically transpose those to the RAD program. So, they're pretty much the same on all of the levels. So, we think we worked hard to make the RAD program a fair deal at the end of the day for the residents. The upshot is more financing, improve the properties, do a better job. We used to be losing 10,000 units of public housing a year. We had a $30 billion backlog and in the first five years of RAD, we generated $5 billion of new capital. We've reduced the 10,000 units of housing loss nationally by a third. So, it's been a pretty successful program and we think it ought to work here. And the last impact ought to be for, how's it gonna help HACCA? Stabilize its financing, help you redevelop the properties, give you funding that you will know, a steady stream of funds over the long term, funds that you can actually put in your budget and say, oh, these are replacement reserves or these are maintenance funds. You can't do that in public housing year over year today. You can only do it every year, each year. So, there'll be important benefits to HACCA going forward using this new initiative that'll be very different than what it's been accustomed to. And again, I've been in affordable housing for 35 years and I worked for Jim Rouse for a long time, I've worked for many able people, and it's always been an amazing sort of head-scratcher why public housing is treated different than any other kind of affordable housing. And so, this is really an effort to get you on that same platform, give you those opportunities and, and make it work here. And I'm pretty confident based on what's going on nationally that it'll happen here in Annapolis. So, I'll just leave it at that for now and if there are any questions, we can answer them.
And I will, I'll end by saying, we, I think back in, I want to say October, when we made the application, we put in an application to convert the entire portfolio. We do have 935, counting our mixed finance units. We have 935 deeply, um, public housing right now. When they transfer, we will call them deeply affordable housing because they no longer will be getting public housing financing. So, once you change the platform, they really aren't public housing at that point. So, we will end up with 935 deeply affordable housing units on the same site that we have right now. We put them into two portfolios or two phases. The phase one was Newtown 20, Morris Blum, but in addition, it also will be Obree 1, Obree 3, and Annapolis Gardens. Even though those properties, the mixed finance, Obree 1, 3, and Annapolis Gardens are not in need of rehab, they do want that steady funding source, so they want to convert as well. In phase two is Harbor House, Eastport Terrace, Robinwood, and Bloomsbury Square. So, right now, we are actively pursuing first Newtown, Blum is gonna be right behind it. Newtown had to get going first because it is the financing that's being sought, is low-income housing tax credit, that's a competitive financing tool. It hasn't dropped dead application date, you had to get everything ready and be ready to apply. Blum is gonna be financed with 4% tax credits which have a rolling application date, is not competitive, so we can line up one and then immediately roll into Blum and we'll also get the deal terms for Obree 1, 3, and Annapolis Gardens. And then we'll begin on phase two. Phase two must be in by February 2019. So, the financing must be in by, concept must be in by 2019. So, we had one year from, we just got our, I didn't, I didn't say this, we just got our commitment to enter into a housing assistant payment contract, it's called the CHAP, that is HUD's commitment to us that we're gonna give you this HAP contract, we are getting ready to transfer you, and we got that for phase one, we got it in February. So, when that, that's the trigger point, then it says, one year later, you should bring me in phase two, right? So, we'll give you the next CHAP, so that gives you one year. It is purposefully saying, let's not dwaddle, let's just make this transfer, let's get going. So, that's the path that we're on right now. We'll take any questions on RAD.
All the woman, Peniel Charles?
Mr. Mayor, I'll allow all the woman, Henson, to ask her question since she's, I saw her hand go up, so I'll follow her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure that we're on the same page when we discuss what's going on. Ms. Wilborn, you said, once you change the platform, they really aren't public housing. And I think that was very profound because it is a definite shift in the way that we have affordable and public housing in the city. It is a forever pivot that changes the character of it completely. Annapolis is the city where we had a concentration, our African-American population concentrated in our old Fourth Ward area. After urban renewal came, then everyone was dispersed and kind of pushed out into these public housing neighborhoods. So, for better or worse, it is the unfortunate legacy that some people have, it's just the public housing. People were not paid fair prices for their homes, people were not really given a fair deal when urban renewal came. So, public housing was what they had left over. It was what our, we live in a country that hasn't paid reparations, we haven't righted all the wrongs, but one of the things, one of the apples in the basket was public housing. And this program forever changes that and it will not be a true public housing anymore. My understanding correct that right now, the ownership is that the HACCA owns it and is subject to a lien or HUD's ownership currently?
So, right now, for all intents and purposes, HUD owns it, the financier owns it, right? HUD owns it, HUD finances it. We are the title owner, but it is for the benefit, it's in trust. HUD runs it, the regulations run it, any, I couldn't sell it, I couldn't lien it, I couldn't do anything to it. So, it's what you call ownership. And I, and I know this is a big rub with everyone and I'm gonna try and answer it as completely as I can. So, what do you call ownership? If right now, today, you know, HUD has a lot of the call and we follow their rules, right? I'm out of compliance with those rules. And so, that's who, I have title ownership with HUD, right? In RAD, and let me just say about forever changing, I think we have to understand that the federal government no longer funds that thing called public housing the way it was intended, period. And we could, whether it was our legacy, whether it was our hope and dream, when the funding stops, we have to decide what are we gonna do about it? That's where we are. The funding decreased over time consistently. Section 8 sort of went a little bit inching up. Which one do you want? The one that's constantly going down because it's called public housing? Or the one that's kinda holding its own and maybe it'll go up, but you know that it stays steady for you for at least the first contract period and then the contracts have to be renewed each time? So, I get 20 years, I know what it's gonna be, I know 20 years and it has a little built-in kick, so I know what I'm getting. I don't want people to hold on to what it used to be. Let's evaluate what it is. Public housing is underfunded in this nation. That's why there was a RAD. That's why there was a RAD. As Patrick said, we had a $30 billion deficit of funding for capital improvements of public housing across the nation. That's what HUD said. HUD owned up to their own problem because they were really passing on the money the Congress appropriated and said, listen, I'm underfunded by $30 billion, there's no way I'll ever catch up, right? There's no way I ever catch up and the property's just aging all across the nation. Because of the properties aging all across the nation, the nation is losing public housing at 10,000 units per year. It sounded the alarm, hey guys, this ain't working. It's not gonna work. And that's when Patrick said, they said, okay, come up with something else. The something else is RAD. The something else is, let's look honestly at the protections that public housing has afforded. Let's also look honestly at the failings of public housing and let's try to address The protections are the items that Patrick listed. No loss of units. It isn't the, hey, make some of the market rate, make some, no, come back, I have 935 units right now in my portfolio, come back with 935 units, okay? Number one, no loss of units. No displacement of any family. Everyone that has a valid lease in current public housing will have a lease when they go through RAD. Those were two of the major issues in the prior iterations of redevelopment of public housing. Some of the other concerns had to do with residents' grievance rights, so they were transferred by law. So, RAD sort of said, the things that seemed to matter most, and not just seem, they had focus groups of public housing residents to itemize those items that were most concerned. Grievance was one, the rescreening was a big one, losing the housing stock was a big one, having the resident councils were a big one. Those then were made part of RAD by law. Can't do RAD and not do those things, period, end of story. So, every developer, whomever's coming on site, no, this is the baseline. So, HUD said, I can't fund the improvements the way they need to be funded and if I just sit here, they will disintegrate on their own. So, I'm going to put you in a position to fund the improvements. I'm going to require that you keep control, long-term ownership of your land, we're gonna put a use agreement, I'm gonna put a law in that says what has to stay and those rights that have to accompany you, but you're gonna have to find some financing outside of HUD 'cause we don't have it anymore, legacy or no legacy.
I think you're too kind to our federal counterparts when you say that they are unable to fund housing and capital improvements to affordable housing. I think it is an unwillingness, an outright unwillingness to do so. For the, so, the properties are now held, so more or less, if it were your home, it would be the bank then has the lien against your home, you are the owner of the home. So, the RAD program severs the lien and it gives, it kinda has the housing authority there as the autonomous owner to enter into agreements with different development partners to develop the property. Is that correct?
It was, it is more than, it's more layers than that. HUD doesn't walk away because that contract, that Section 8 contract comes from HUD. With that is a use agreement that says it will, I'm funding this because I'm directing you to use it for deeply affordable housing. So, that doesn't go away. The law doesn't go away that says, this was HUD's property, we are allowing financing to occur on the improvements with the understanding that you will abide, not just the understanding, it is the law that you must abide by these other rights that we are retaining. So, it is a property that no, not only can HACCA not just go out and finance it any way, HUD has to review and approve that we have retained enough control on, let's say, the waitlist, the preferences, the way, the things that made public housing, public housing, we have to get the approval of HUD, that there are adequate controls to protect how you function as the deeply affordable units that were public housing previously. So, it is, we can't fund you ourselves, we're gonna put you in a position to get funding, but we're gonna make sure that the issues that were raised as failures or, or concerns in the prior redevelopment efforts are now protected by law. And let me tell you how this really works. Anytime the federal government says, I'm gonna put a substantial amount of money in a program called RAD and it can be leveraged in this way and that, the developers then decide, okay, I see what I can do and what I can't do. It's, there's no more, you don't have to negotiate and go all, you know, this is what the law says I can do and then I just am going to negotiate this last piece of it together. It gives you that protection by law, it gives you that protection by HUD and its involvement with the long-term contracts. So, it's not the cut and dried HUD just got up and walked off. No, they didn't. They absolutely didn't. They absolutely sort of thought it through to say, how do we bring in money without relinquishing the good that we did have at public housing?
So, you have the affordability covenant that remains and then the terms of your HAP contract which will more or less guide what the use of the property can be. It looks like the preferred funding structure is the Lytech credit. In that housing tax credit, is it correct that there are kind of three players in that deal? That's the funder or the investor, the developer, which sometimes acts as a manager as well, developer-manager, and then housing authority. There's the whole pie of 100% of rights and then the investor gets 99% and then the 1% is then split between the housing authority and the developer-operator. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if you would think of the investor, the 99% owner is really sort of the, the bank putting in the money, right? It's, it's the person that put it, put up all the money, really, okay? So, that's who, and they are there for their compliance period, which is 15 years.
Let me just comment on that if I could, Beverly. The, the main thing as we've said under RAD is by statute, ownership or control now resides with the housing authority, period. If you choose to enter into financing called tax credit financing, then you enter into a partnership agreement and you choose to offer an ownership interest to a third party in return for the investment, but you shall retain an ownership share and control over the property. And the most important thing that goes on in any real estate relationship is who owns the land underneath it? HACCA will continue to own that land. And if you do choose, and you don't have to do this under RAD, but if you do choose to use tax credits which run for a 15-year compliance and investment period, then who comes around at the back end when it's time to recapitalize the property? Guess what? HACCA owns the property, will have a right of first refusal, probably a more technical put option to take the control back from the partnership. So, by statute, RAD requires ownership or control by the housing authority. The lien, which is actually called a declaration of trust from HUD, puts that here. You choose how to finance it, you choose how to structure your ownership and control, but you will always, at least as long as we're involved, you will always control the land, you will have a use agreement, and you'll have the ability to kind of take it back on the back end if you're using tax credits. That's how you get ownership and control under RAD.
So, let me, let me say, for HACCA, and so that's the definition of RAD overall, for HACCA, we will need to get a development partner because we don't have the development experience. We don't have reserves that can give development guarantees. So, you have, if you are not in a position to do that on your own, just like right now, you might want to build your house, if you don't know how to do that, then you have to go have to hire somebody else to do it for you. We have to get into a partnership with a development partner because we don't have that in-house capability. We also don't have right now today, in-house capabilities of running low-income housing tax credits. We have run solely public housing. So, they have different regulations, right? So, you've gotta run them, now we gotta run them simultaneous. So you've gotta run them, now we gotta run them simultaneously, and you just gotta have somebody who understands that. And what we have been, again, when we're talking about the deal terms, it is, how long will the developer partner, what, how long will they be the primary manager? When can HACA, or what kind of training, or how do we make a transition, and what's the options of doing that? But HACA has to now be in, have the capacity, build the capacity to run the properties as tax credit properties and compliant with those rules. Now, we started by saying, "We're in a recovery agreement from failing to run public housing appropriately," right? And HUD acted on that. You have to recognize that then, you're not in a position to say, "Not only, you know, while I was troubled running my main job, I can now switch over and run a different thing altogether." No, we're gonna have to walk with our developer partner and allow them to be that lead until we have built in that capacity. And I, it is the only prudent way to go.
Under your stewardship of the housing authority, you have been able to do some tremendous things with getting it out of troubled agency status and back on a recovery plan towards being a solid solvent agency. We don't know who's going to have that position 15 years from now, when these tax credits come to the end of their lifecycle. And it will be a time where things will have to be renegotiated in a way that there could be significant changes for the residents. Things like the no re-screening are more or less the one-shot deal. You get to come back to the property when you come back, but next year, when it's time to recertify, or 15 years from now, whomever is holding the note there, should they want to put those things in place, like credit score requirements or other things, once you are redoing your deal there, and it is no longer this fine collection at the table, but it is in the hands of someone else to negotiate on behalf of the residents what that looks like, presuming that housing authority could even purchase those properties back, or do things where they regain the ownership interest. It's something that at this time, we don't yet know what the future is going to look like 15 years from now. So for the people that live there, it is an incredible gamble to them, understanding that you can't hold on to what you have if it's no longer working, but also understanding that as the people in these positions, it's incumbent upon us to make sure we go down every road, down every path, look for every funding source, and try to make sure that if there are ways to maintain some public ownership of at least one of these, when you're doing your physical needs assessment on a property like Bloomsbury. Is there any willingness, desire on behalf of housing authority to say, "Are there any of these properties that are, that we are able to hold publicly and not have to leverage with the funding structures to rehabilitate this?"
Absolutely. Absolutely. If there were public funding sources that funded public housing, you wouldn't be at RAD. It's just that simple. It honestly, it's just that simple. This isn't a get up and one day and wanna go RAD. This is get up one day and say, "I have a 65-year-old property, I have a 55-year-old property, I have a 58-year-old property, and I have virtually no capital improvement funding, and none likely to come." It's a reality.
Absolutely.
It's an absolute reality check.
Could I just add a couple of quick things, Beverly? None of us can know who's gonna be here in 15 years, but the important parts of RAD are three things, again. One is, it's not just subject to a negotiation at that point in time. The statute actually indicates there's a subsidy stream in a contract that's renewable, shall be renewed, it's required. That subsidy stream has a companion use agreement with it that says it shall be operated basically under the terms of RAD, public housing converting to Section 8 as we know it today. So there's no ability to come in and say, "Well, we're gonna rescreen, do this differently" at that point in time. And then the third, but the most important thing in all of this, is the continued ownership and control over the land. And that puts HACA in the driver's seat for long-term. I mean, that's just a fundamental real estate that you didn't have before, and now you'll have it, and I think that's the ultimate assurance to, what's the square deal for the residents continuing as long as possible? It's those three things. It's the contract, it's a use agreement, and it's your ability to control that land down. Whoever's gonna, you probably will be here in 15 years. I probably won't be. I can't speak for Beverly, but it's, you know, our heirs and successors are going to work with those three pillars. The contract, the use agreement, and the ownership of the land.
Thank you. I would just reiterate, what the residents are saying to me is, hoping that we are going down every road, looking at every funding source, those that come from foundations, those that come from grants. If you do your physical needs assessment of one of those properties, and there is some feasible amount of money, that the state, that the city, that the county, that we can put together and contribute to try and keep one of them publicly owned, I know that there is a real will amongst the residents to see that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna preface my question with, with every upside, there are a few downsides. I am employed by Anarona County Public Schools. I'm on staff at a school in West County. The students at our school, many of them live in Mead Village community. The rumor that I've heard, I don't know if it's true, is that with the units that will be constructed, will have a limited number of bedrooms, which means if a family has several children, maybe five or six children, that would be an issue with them moving back to their housing unit.
You mean in our development?
Yes, yes.
Oh, no, no. You, in fact, we have to do a thorough analysis of the existing tenants and what, how many bedrooms they qualify for, and that's where you have to build that back. So not only can you not say, "Oh, I don't have the unit for you," no, they have to come back. They have to come back, unless they choose not to. So you can't not build the right unit, or, you know, it's not handicap accessible. No, they have an absolute right to come back. So you have to make whatever accommodation you have to make to have that family come back. Thank you.
Alderman Turner?
Just real quickly, to address Alderwoman Henson's concern about longevity, that's sort of not in a developer's DNA. So I just wanna just ask you, without divulging too much, is what kind of progress are you making in developing, no pun intended, relationships with these partners, these developers that are key?
I think we have been very much encouraged with the response, with the interest in our properties. We had a, we had four, we had four, we had seven initially, but then four who came through for Newtown. We have Blummas coming up next. There's been a lot of interest in Blummas of beautifully located property. People are interested, they're absolutely interested in developments in the city of Annapolis. That's, that's gotta be our strongest calling card. We're in a place people want to be and want to have, not because they're gonna move these people out. No, that isn't the one. That may be, you know, it may have been, but it's not where it is now. It is because people see the possibility of helping to develop really livable communities in a lovely city. Some of our properties are waterfront. I mean, we have ideal opportunities, and people see it. And that's what we have to work to maximize, not for others, but for the folks who are there. There's no two ways about it. But it makes our RFPs and our efforts easier for us, in the same way that investors, the tax credit investors, are very interested in investing in the city of Annapolis. And they have requirements from the Community Reinvestment Act to invest in this community, because there's a lot of financing institutions. So we have some things going for us. There's no two ways about it. We have some things going for us. And, yes, you know, can we come up with a scenario much later on, 20 years, say? I don't, I guess I do believe, as Patrick has said, we have put, HUD put in place as many sort of protections to keep this deeply subsidized housing stock that they started. They don't wanna lose that housing stock. That's why they stepped up. This is not something that the nation will replace. I give you that. And so we all have to be committed to keeping that one for one. And we, especially in the city of Annapolis, where affordability is such an issue, and where we are blessed to have really nice sites and located right where we wanna be, we have to keep those sites deeply affordable, and that's the intent, and that's what we're doing.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you. Question about Annapolis Gardens and O'Bury Court. They are the public-private partnerships that exist today. Did I understand you to say that they're gonna be part of the RAD program?
Absolutely. Part of the RAD program is stabilized, they, the units of public housing in O'Bury Court, like O'Bury Court 1, there's 50 units of public housing, 3 has 61 units. Annapolis Gardens has 150 units. Those are not all public housing, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. But the units that are public housing in each of these developments want to have stable income, because right now, they are too, are getting the declining income, right? So they're getting the same public housing treatment as anybody else. So they want to convert to the platform, even though they're not going to go and do rehab, right? They just want to get a contract now. They just like, "Put me onto the Section 8 platform, this going like this versus going like that." So, yes, they will be converted to RAD as well. The public housing units in those developments will be converted to RAD. But remember, they're mixed income, so some of them are not public housing units. So the public housing units will be converted to RAD.
Okay. Is that how we increase our numbers?
No.
From 735 to 935?
Oh, yes, I count it, yes. When you count my portfolio, right now, I, that is who I am funded for. I'm funded for 935 public housing units. And that includes my public housing units at Annapolis Garden, public housing, so, yes. And so those areas, I must still end up with 935 public housing or deeply subsidized.
You know, I'm a retired English teacher, so I just thought it was me that'd be able to figure that out, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
We really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're gonna make us proud. Mr. City Attorney, I'm gonna present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is reports by committees.
Is there any older person who would like to present a report? Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to report on the last Environmental Matters Committee that we had. And, let's see, within that meeting, we had, we received a report from the Annapolis Conservancy Board on their priorities in the future, and also for, from the Annapolis Environmental Commission. So for the Conservancy Board, they have one main priority they're gonna look at, and that is to identify future opportunities and priorities for pursuing new green space in the city. And so essentially, a Greenway Plan for the city. And so they're gonna be trying to work on that and timing that along with the comprehensive plan for next year. For the Annapolis Environmental Commission, I just thought I'd go over their near-term priorities. They have, one, establish a no-discharge zone. Number two is update the 2004 City of Annapolis Parks Recreation, Open Space Recreation Plan and include a master Greenway. Number three is improve coordination between, of environmental policies, programs, and investment across city departments. Four is modify the Forest Conservation Act to create a true known and lost forest law. Number five is clarify allowable uses of the city's watershed restoration fund. Number six is improve street sweeping practices. Seven is ensure that stormwater management practices that are mandated by law do not qualify for discounts on the stormwater utility fee. Number eight is increase the amount of stormwater runoff treated on redevelopment projects from 50% to 100%. And they also listed a number of long-term priorities, I'm not gonna go through, but they had three categories. One was water quality, another was climate change, renewable energy, and the last was waste reduction. And this should be available online, and I can also send it to my colleagues if they'd like to see a copy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in the process of putting together the Audit Committee. I'm having a little bit of a difficult time until after April the 15th, for obvious reasons. I am trying to get people in the accounting field on board for this very important committee, and needless to say, almost every accountant I know is extremely busy until Tax Day. And hopefully, shortly after that, we will be able to hit the ground running and commence with our, what our charge from the council is at that time. Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
The, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting on Monday, March the 5th at 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met and had a presentation from Mr. Will Rowell, who is the new staff person in charge of Boards and Commissions. We were interested in hearing what his plans are for, one, filling the vacancies, the many vacancies that we have on our Boards and Commissions, and, two, how to orient the members of our Boards and Commissions as to what their rights and responsibilities are. So he gave us a pretty thorough presentation on what his plans are. I hope he followed up with all of my colleagues to share with you the list of Boards and Commissions, so that you'll see where there are vacancies within your respective wards, with the hope that you'll begin to seek out folks to fill those vacancies. He will be back to us, I guess, next month to share some of the other pieces of information we asked about. One of the concerns has been whether Boards and Commission members understand their portion of the city code, and, again, what their rights and responsibilities and limitations may be. And so the need to do proper orientations and training is valuable. But the first step will be helping to get people to fill these vacancies on all of our Boards and Commissions. The rest of our meeting was taken up with 0-118, which we'll be addressing later on in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
I see some future Boards and Commission volunteers out there today. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. City Attorney, next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Thank you so much for your patience. During the comment for general public, I may speak on any item not scheduled for public hearing tonight. Legislation scheduled for public hearing is 0-718, Board of Port Warden Appeals. The first three speakers signed up are, if they'd like to come forward and state their name and address, Kevin Sullivan, the first three, John Schoeffel, and Joel Buca. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Kevin Sullivan. I live at 7 Cumberland Court here in Annapolis, Maryland. I've been here five times in regards to this. I'm following up on- I'm following up on what Alderwoman Finlayson helped me with the last time I was here, and Mr. Payon. They asked the Law Department to clarify the HBC's ruling seventeen times during several lawsuits that I have had to endure because of their malfeasance in regards to preserving our city, something that Mrs. Finlayson just spoke about, I believe, with bringing in somebody else from outside. There are several members of this committee right now, of this council right now, that have known about this for twelve years and have refused to step forward and do anything. Today, I spoke with my new Alderwoman. She came right over to my house. Thank you. It's a refreshing change from the last three Aldermen that I have endured here. We have some real problems with the HBC as citizens of this city and the support or lack of our laws by our Law Department. We cannot accept phantom inspectors, no documentation, and their word. This is not going to stand. You cannot continue to support this. I've been here five times. I've been stonewalled, stiff-armed, all twelve years. I've lived here in this house for thirty-eight years. Around me now, three bed and break, not bed and breakfasts, they're Airbnbs. Seventeen code violations, and this Law Department is supporting it by the man that you said did a great job. I don't think that is a good job. I don't think it's a good job for the HBC to not support and not defend preservation in this neighborhood. Cumberland Court backs up to the pack of gardens. It's behind the Hammond-Harwood House and in the block of the Bryce House between King George and Prince George Street. They have violated their trust over and over again there. All our neighbors have spoke about it. And we need your support, Mayor. We need your support to change not only the leadership of the HBC, but the mindset of some of our civil servants. Their civil servants, not the city, we're the city. So, the last three administrations have ignored that, in this particular case, for sure. So, I'm soliciting your support with the support of my new Alderwoman to hold accountable those individuals and to eradicate them or to re-educate them or to reassign them to positions that they can be successful in. I need your support on multiple issues here. As you know, for twelve years, you, you, a lot has happened. This is seventeen administration approvals. Seventeen. They haven't even fixed the ones that are broken now. They ignore the fact that they're broken. They ignore the fact that there was no transparency. They ignore your constituent and your neighbor. I know you guys don't want that to happen. I know how hard you all work. We see at the meetings. I go to a couple of meetings. I know you go to all of them. I've met with three city attorneys, a guy from Sabrina Park, a woman from DC, several city managers, a guy from Georgia. They're all gone. I'm here. I'm your neighbor. I expect to be treated like you get treated. We just pledged allegiance to the flag. What was the lines? With justice and liberty for all? You have to make a paradigm shift, this council. I don't know about the administration yet, but I do know that two of them wouldn't make that shift and didn't make it. So, I'm asking you now to support this effort that my Alderwoman will probably spearhead, but I need Mrs. Finlayson and Mr. Payon to help do that as well. I can't go into the particulars right now, but I know that you don't want this to happen. Zoning laws, laws that you passed are not being kept. Mrs. Finlayson, they denied gutters. Do you think it wasn't the intent of this government and governments preceding that, that gutters are a pretty good idea in a, in a city as compact as this? It's a good idea. Everybody agreed with that. They said, "Oh, no gutters were ever on that thing." I showed my new Alderwoman the remnants of the old gutter system. The house behind me was sold four times after two generations of Anapolitans lived there. When I first moved in there, it was a great neighborhood. Now, the houses are rolled every two years. People don't even live in them. They don't have neighbors. They don't have neighbors. Seven houses are in Cumberland Court. Five of them aren't owned by Annap, by people that call Annapolis their home, but go to the HPC and say, "Hey, I'm going to, I love preservation, but if you'll only do this for me," and they do it against the will of all the neighbors. Multiple neighbors have stood up in this situation, and they have ignored us in their meetings, in this council. You got to make the shift.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Well, wait a minute. No, thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor.
We, we work for you, so.
How are you going to, where are we going to go from here? Because I'm going to tell you, three years ago, Mrs. Finlayson said to the administration, "Get this squared away." And Mr. Payon, these guys are senior elected officials, elected, not appointed. The mindset of this building with a lot of the employees, not the city employees, is that they don't have to respond.
Thank you. We're going to move it forward. Thank you.
When are you going to get in touch with me?
I'm going to talk to Ellie and after this meeting, tonight, and we'll make a plan.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. I'll trust you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And by the way, everything that the Assistant Attorney said, these are documents from your, from this building.
Thank you.
Okay? That refutes everything he said under a Maryland Freedom of Information Act. He did not tell the truth. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Sherfle. Thank you, Maryland Ave., for all being here.
Hello. My name is John Sherfle, and I am a business owner here in Annapolis. I'm also here tonight representing my fellow business owners from Maryland Avenue and State Circle. I'm the president of the Maryland Avenue and State Circle Merchant Association, which encompasses over forty independently-owned businesses on the streets of Maryland Avenue and State Circle, which is the oldest shopping district in Annapolis. Yes, that does predate Main Street. Tonight, we're here, and of course, there's over twelve of us here tonight because we are addressing a matter of grave concern to our businesses. There is a proposal within the city which has not been entirely public. To the best of our knowledge, we've tried to look up the records on the public discourse of this matter, and we failed to find it. Beginning in March, there is going to be the installation of cameras on Maryland Avenue. These cameras will serve as a sort of red light camera system that we may all be familiar with or speeding camera system that we all may be familiar with that instantaneously tickets traffic violators. The initial proposal is calling this as a test. The business owners see this test in the order of magnitude where if this was the federal government, we would ask for you to take this test out to the Nevada Desert because it's going to create such an atomic impact on the public perception that it would decimate our businesses. Whether or not this program goes live or not, the mere presence of the cameras and the public perception that these cameras are active and tracking comings and goings of their license plates and of their movements and potentially instantaneously giving them tickets for minor moving violations would send a chilling effect throughout our business community and gravely impact our abilities as businesses to operate here in Annapolis. Speaking personally and also from many of the comments that I receive from the members of my association, we are one hundred percent family and independently-owned businesses on Maryland Avenue and State Circle. We are the only street, and I am saying this without exaggeration, we are the only two streets in Annapolis that have businesses that you cannot find anywhere else in the world. There's no Dunkin' Donuts on Maryland Avenue. There is no Starbucks on State Circle. When people come to Annapolis and they want to have a genuine, unique experience that they cannot find anyplace else, the only place in this city where they can do that genuinely is on our streets and in our shopping district. What the city is proposing to do with these cameras and other neglects that have continued throughout the years is to effectively end business in this area. I would go as far as to say that with this parking camera program, with the neglect of our sidewalks, with the neglect of allowing electrical wires to hang from our streets and spools and to be unpoliced, I would go out on a limb and say that Annapolis genuinely does not want business to be conducted in that area. And if that is the case, please let us know. Because you have people like myself who've entirely drained their retirement funds to be here. You have colleagues like mine who've depleted their children's college savings accounts to try to run their businesses here. You have people working two jobs just to continue to run a business here in Annapolis, and we get no support from the city. We get the opposite of support from the city. And if you don't want us here, rezone Maryland Avenue and State Circle so that the businesses know that they're not allowed. No more secret meetings where you're going to put up cameras to monitor where our customers come and go from. No more worrying about whether or not you're going to pave our streets or do routine maintenance. Just let us know where you stand. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. I, the first I, first I heard about this was yesterday when I was having coffee on Maryland Ave., so we hear you loud and clear. Alderman Payon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm unclear as to what type of cameras you're talking about. You seem to combine security cameras with speed cameras. Which one? They're very different.
They are, they're, they're cameras that are similar to speeding, speeding cameras, but these are going to be used for, they're not security cameras. They're specifically for parking and moving violations. So, if somebody parks and pulls into a loading zone, they'll be instantaneously ticketed. If somebody double parks on the street, if one of our merchants who is loading or unloading at an antique store, for instance, and double parks in the street momentarily, instantaneously they'll get a ticket. We have a flower shop where that requires them to load and unload, they will be instantaneously ticketed. If somebody overstays the meter for a minute, they will be instantaneously ticketed. That's, that's the parallel I'm drawing with the speed cameras.
Who's putting these up, supposedly?
Ellie, Alderman Attorney, you might know a little bit more about it.
Yeah, let me add a little bit because Tom Andrews is not here nor Rick Gordon. Thank you for coming out and speaking.
This is SP Plus?
As a group. Yeah. Let me just tell you the facts as I know them. We, the city, Tommy Andrews, we meet weekly with SP Plus. The Eric Evans is there, who is the, the, what is Eric's position? With Downtown Annapolis Partnership. And Hollis Minor, who's Economic Development. So, SP Plus proposed a pilot of, they got an offer from this, it's called Cloud Park, and what they proposed is a pilot to install, to, to test, to see if this enforcement mechanism would be even achievable in Annapolis before they went any further. And as John said, it is, I'm not too smart about it, but it's, they install cameras. Well, let me back up a little bit. SP Plus says their license plate technology.
I thought it had the floor.
Oh, I thought you wanted to know what it was.
I just asked who, who's putting it in, that's all.
Oh, okay. I thought I was asked to explain it a little bit.
Alderman Payon?
Sorry.
All right. Do you know when these are supposed to go in?
March of this year.
All right. And how big of a parking problem do you have on Maryland Avenue?
And, and our parking problems are no different than the city. And one of the things that has been most frustrating to me is that we have a complete, open, and transparent policy with our, with our engagement with the city. We are constantly proactively reaching out, attending city meetings, attending, you know, other association business meetings, trying to formulate solutions to the problems here in Annapolis. And every time we go to these meetings and present plausible solutions, low-cost solutions, fair solutions to what we all may, you know, feel as a parking problem, we're rebuffed. We have a litany of, of opportunities and solutions to help Annapolis and particularly our business district alleviate any type of parking problems, but nobody from SP Plus or the city comes to our table to find out what those might be.
So, the answer is, as I have experienced, you have a terrible parking problem, correct?
I, I, I somewhat agree. I somewhat agree. I don't think that it's nothing that can be over, cannot be overcome with better communication.
Let, let me assure you that I don't often speak for my colleagues, but I think I can in telling you that we very much want business to be on Maryland Avenue. That is hardly the case, that we don't care. Nobody's going to, nobody from this council is going to tell you we don't want you there. Quite the opposite. If this is a situation that you don't want to have arise, then I'm quite sure that you've got a rather receptive audience. Thank you. Thank you.
Oldham and Tierney, sorry.
They're not going to be installed in March. I think the system is broken as far as communication. I think it's assumed that Downtown Annapolis Partnership, SP Plus went to a Ward One Residence Association to, to kind of get a feel for the reaction, and it was somewhat the same. They met briefly at the Downtown Annapolis Partnership and addressed, and the reaction again was sort of the same. The Transportation Board, this is all public stuff, the Transportation Board, Alex Pine is, invited them in to talk about it, you know, as well. So, I mean, I'm getting the sense that it's, it's not being well received, the, this, this free pilot thing. They chose, what they're saying is, what they're saying is that their license plate technology, the cars that, that go and, and, you know, zap the license plates because cars are too parked close, too parked, parked too close together, et cetera, is not as efficient as they would like. And the objective of this is, is enforcing so that cars, you know, are not infiltrating these, these meter spaces that are dedicated to Maryland Avenue. They chose Maryland Avenue as a, as a test case because of the prevalent problem and also, I believe, East Street as the two possible pilot locations. I don't think this is being well received and I don't think it's going to happen. But, so, we, we'll, you know, they'll still present before the Transportation Board. Again, they meet weekly with Tom, Tom Andrews and, you know, I think the, I, I don't think they reached out to your, you know, to Maryland Ave as, as well as they should have. I think there was probably an assumption that Downtown Annapolis Partnership, because somehow it became the telephone game that they were being installed, but they're not being installed. This is just investigative to see what the public reaction is.
Oldham and Finn, listen?
It's negative.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, I was going to ask Chief Baker to come up and to explain, but, well, no, let me finish when I'm done.
Okay.
But it's not the police department. It is SP Plus. And so I'd like to ask our acting city manager, Chief Stokes, to pass on the wish that there be a meeting facilitated between the community and SP Plus that hopefully will address the concerns, but also on an ongoing basis, they be brought in the loop when decisions are being made. We don't want anybody to feel as if we're not trying to be transparent. And if anybody representing us is not trying to be transparent, then we need to fix that. So I would ask that Chief, that you share with Ms. Andrews to help facilitate a meeting with the community to talk about these plans and others that they foresee.
I would be happy to pass that along to Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Chief.
Oldham and Del Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to indicate to Mr. Sherful, I was not being disrespectful to you when I walked away from the dais because as Public Safety Chair, I went back to talk to Chief Baker to find out if the police department had anything to do with this, and he said no, he was not aware of it. So just to make sure we covered all the bases.
One thing you say, because I'm reviewing it.
That's okay, but I like, I like direct contact and looking at people face to face rather than going through a phone. So that's why I went back there and talked to him about it. Thank you.
That's his story and he's sticking to it.
Oldham and Tierney?
Yeah, John, how would you, how would you propose that SP Plus reaches out to you? I know that you were at the Downtown Annapolis Partnership meeting and something must have, there must have been.
My telephone number is publicized.
What's that?
My telephone number is publicized.
So, but as a group, do you want them to come to your meeting or?
You can call me. And we have a website, shopmarylandavenue.com if you want a full list of all the shops that you can find on Maryland Avenue and State Circle.
I love the boutique district.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joel Bucher.
Hi, my name, it's Joel Bunker.
Bunker, sorry, man. Sorry if I look like two in there.
So just first, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for what you do. I'm encouraged by, I guess, the new blood in the council and administration and, and positive things happening in the community with the Housing Authority. My wife and I, we live, we live in Ward Seven. We were in Ward Six before. We love the city. We want the city to be a vibrant place where we can raise our kids. We have two boys and a third boy on the way here in April. We have a business on Maryland Ave. It's allowed my wife, who's a teacher, to stay home, manage the coffee shop, and I teach at the Phoenix Academy. We've been involved with starting a 501(c)(3) that does work with community gardens, school gardens. We want the city to be a vibrant place where we can raise our kids in. So there are two reasons why I'm here. I guess I've got to be careful because I don't, I want to take away from what's happening on Maryland Ave. For, for Maryland Avenue, I'm obviously concerned about the cameras, but I think what concerns me the most is, is the lack of communication. I feel like with the parking situation, we, we aren't informed. And it'd be nice to be a part of the conversation. I think we need context for community, for neighbors to get together. I think that's particularly the case in parking because I don't think parking is so much an issue as, it's an issue with, I feel like with residents, businesses, customers, and I don't feel like everyone's at that table all the time. I think it's complicated. But one question I would have is why is Maryland Ave a location that was chosen? There are parking meters there already, so an area like Prince George does not have meters. We have spaces, one space is our loading zone, was recently converted into parking on Sundays. And after six, my wife, very pregnant right now with her two children, is sometimes dropping things off on Sundays or we're there after hours bringing things to the cafe. That space isn't available in the same context it was. So I would really, I would really like to see some investment in Maryland Ave, too. I, I don't know of, and this might be my own ignorance, but of an improvement the city's made for a while, I feel like it is neglected, yet a lot is asked of us and a lot of the businesses struggle on Maryland Ave. We want to see Maryland Ave a vibrant place. In addition to that, just one other topic, I'm not an expert in affordable housing. One of my mentors was involved in a very large Hope Six project, which was mentioned. I'm wondering if, how familiar the council is with Hope Six, specifically in redevelopment of, of public housing? And then questions about vouchers. We talk about, about funds going away for public housing. What about, what about vouchers for Section Eight? I don't think it's been addressed, but Michael Mira, if you ever reach out to the guy, he's, he's director of the Tacoma Housing Authority, took a 165 acre project, and what he would say is he created a community, not just public housing, and he used subsidized funds to actually create situations where you had private ownership subsidizing, he would say the loveliest little houses around. They created denser development and, and created context for community, and I think we need that. I teach a lot of the kids in the communities and, and so does my wife. So I'm excited for, again, for new blood. I want to, I would love to see some vision. It seems like so many times when folks come and, and communities I've been a part of, there's very little done about it and there's concessions made a lot. I think some concessions need to be made on Maryland Ave right now to the businesses and, and bring, and bring the community together because the parking issue is, is that there's this fight, and I think there's a way we can work together to figure out our parking situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. I'm out. Jay Fleming is the next speaker.
I just wanted to say here, here to John Sherful, one of the business owners on Maryland Avenue. It's Joe Fleming Contemporary Art, and I'd like to see my customers have parking and not be frightened away by Maryland Avenue being maybe an ominous and scary place to park your car, guaranteed place to get a ticket. Thank you.
Thank you. I was in, looking in your beautiful gallery yesterday. Thank you. It's really, really pretty. So, anybody?
Also a Maryland Avenue business owner. I say pretty much what John Sherful said for all of us and the people who spoke. I would like to point out that parking by itself in an old city is difficult as is, but to create a situation where people have to be afraid to be photographed, and we don't even know what platform they're going to use for that pilot program, which creates maybe privacy concerns as well, is alarming to us. And in order to stay alive there, we need that not to happen. So please take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lisa Quina?
Excuse me, ma'am. What is your name?
Carmen Chauvin.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Lisa Quina. I have a store on Maryland Avenue called Barefoot Dwelling, and it is at 65 Maryland Avenue. And I moved my store from Baltimore to Maryland Avenue in April and have enjoyed this location a lot. And I second everything that John Sherful has said about the parking issue, the communication issue, and the support of the businesses on Maryland Avenue. And as someone who runs a vintage furniture store, I must unload my car multiple times a day sometimes and often unload a pickup truck and, and do my best to be considerate of the rules that already exist on the street for unloading and, and reloading. And so just would like that to be known, that we are concerned about our businesses and it being difficult for customers and community members and residents to feel comfortable coming in and out of our shops. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Joanna Young?
Hello, I'm Joanna Young. I have Evergreen Antiques and True Vintage at 69 Maryland Avenue. And I'm just here to add my voice. When we caught the word of these cameras coming to Maryland Avenue, I think we're all pretty horrified and thinking, as we all said, why Maryland Avenue? Why not Main Street? Why not West Street? Something with more traffic. And it sort of feels like another disappointment, like the way we can't get wayfinding signs or keep them, or just a lot of challenges in funding that we've come across in, in many ways. And we just kind of have to wonder, is SP Plus, you know, motivated by revenue? Are we, as a constituency, as a district, considerate in this, in this issue? And I wanted to add my voice also to Lisa. Loading is so important to so many of our businesses, as important as food drop off to a restaurant. So the fact that we only have one small loading zone, if we were to be policed by these cameras and get infractions every time we try to load in and out of our businesses, it would be disastrous. So we're hopeful that you can help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Ammison?
Hi there. I'm Ginny Ammison. I am with Old Fox Books and Coffee House on 35 Maryland Avenue. Here just to support, obviously, the issue with the parking, but also to let our neighbors know that we do a potluck every first Sunday, so that's coming up at 5:30 as soon as we close. It's part of a way for us to sort of begin and keep a community together. So, I think, guys, if you guys want to come over, you're more than welcome to come. And I think that's it for us. I mean, we all feel the same way about the parking, so I'm not going to keep saying it. Yeah, just wanted to add my voice.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we suggest that you invite Mr. Andrews and SP Plus to your potluck?
Absolutely. Love to have them. Sure.
That's a great idea, Sheila. Thank you. Jeff Hornberger?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, a business owner with my partner Judy on, at 47R1 Maryland Avenue. And, you know, you really can't say any more about the issues. I think everybody here is well aware of Maryland Avenue, what it means and like, you know, when you look at it from the services that it provides and the boutique shops, it's iconic. So to preserve it and to make sure that people get, you know, get brought there instead of being pushed away because of, you know, any parking concerns. I would ask, ask Wordperson Tierney, if there are concerns that extend beyond just SP, you know, SP Plus, you know, they're, whatever they're trying to find, if they're looking for additional revenue, we certainly have some ideas about what that might mean and how we might be able to do it. If residents have a concern, you know, I'm a graduate of the Naval Academy, I've been in 1986, I've been in the, in the Annapolis area now for, you know, the better part of 30 years. So I'm intimately familiar with it. I've, I came back here for a reason, happy to work with, with the residents for them to come in and let's have a discussion if there is a problem. We want to make sure that we're all working on the same page and make sure we're having it. The end of the day, if you can't get ahold of John Sherful, my number is 202-255-2005. You can call me anytime if you want to have a discussion or want to set up a meeting and we'll get the rest of the shop owners together.
Sir, what is your name?
Jeff, J-E-F-F, Hornberger, H-O-R-N-B-E-R-G-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Last speaker is Peter Kane.
Mr. Mayor, so I wanted to just talk a little bit about the HACCA meeting, and I was glad to hear, you know, the one with the administrator from HUD, Joe Defleece, who was a Trump appointee. I, I was glad to hear from all the council what grade.
Sir, did I miss your name?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Peter Kane.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Levin Shipwright Street here downtown. So, but I'm a little, I'm a little bit worried because to a lot of people, it appears that the Trump administration is attempting a semi-privatization of public housing through an unproven program called RAD. And as you all know, it, it works by transferring public housing units to the private sector so that developers and authorities can, and housing authorities can tap into subsidies and finance tools to manage those units. But there are many housing advocates across the country that are concerned about how fast RAD is moving, and they warn that oversight and transparency remain mixed at best. When asked about the safeguards to ensure housing remains affordable, Joe, Joe Defleece, the gentleman that you guys met, he said, "This isn't a situation where we're turning over properties to fly-by-night operators." But for some tenants, these conversions have been a nightmare. Katrina Jones, who's a single mother of three, learned her subsidized building in Hopewell, Virginia would be razed and new affordable housing apartments would be built, which sounds great, but the Hopewell Housing Authority and the nonprofit RAD developer refused to make accommodations for Jones and her family, and they convinced her to take a tenant buyout. Expect rent hikes and work requirements, Diane Yentl, president and CEO of the National Low Income Housing Coalition tweeted recently. Here in Annapolis, city expects to enter into a housing assistance payment contract for Newtown 20 and the Morris Bloom Apartments at this month. So Jessica Castella, an attorney with the National Housing Law Project, says that one of our major concerns is the level and quality of oversight by HUD. I think HUD has put its emphasis on getting properties to closing, but much less effort in making sure that after the deals are finalized, that the transitions go smoothly. The Hopewell RAD conversions violated a wide range of federal law and regulations in, in opposition to what we heard tonight, which sounded extremely rosy. So I just would like you guys to just take a deep breath. I understand that we're having a real problem, the Trump administration has taken away complete funding, but it isn't, we don't need to panic yet. I mean, let's just, you know, try to make sure that we do take. do take care of the people that need to be taken care of. One of the comments that I heard tonight was by the expert that was sitting here. He said something close to, "The most important thing is the ownership of the land." And I would disagree with him in that regard. I think the most important thing is the people and the children that live in these properties and that they're taken care of. So, the Hopewell RAD, and I'll finish up quickly, I'm sorry to go on for so long. The Hopewell RAD conversion violated a wide range of federal laws and regulations, including unlawful threats of eviction and discrimination against families with children and the disabled. Tenant advocates say they reflect a larger accountability issue that's related to the program. We should not be rushing into this program here in Annapolis without a full understanding of the repercussions. I mean, we have children and young families that are living in these places. It would be extremely naive of this administration and HACCA to trust the Trump administration with the lives of our less disadvantaged children and citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Elvia Thompson. I have a business on Maryland Avenue 2, 92 Maryland Avenue, Annapolis Green. I just want to tell you that what I spoke about a couple of weeks ago, the impoundment spaces on State Circle, the signs are still there. So, the media has taken, has been given those spots, and we don't have access to them. So, our customers, our volunteers who want to go to Maryland Avenue are finding that there are rows and rows of empty spots that they can't use. And it's just not fair. We pay taxes here, they don't. They're here doing their job. So, the lobbyists who come to the General Assembly don't get special parking. Why should the media, the media? And I'm a former reporter. I get it. They have a job to do, but they should do their job just like everybody else. So, please do something. They're taking up until April. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? It's Elvia, sorry. Alderman Tierney, Elvia?
Yeah, I just need to echo that, and it is a little frustrating for me. I actually took up the signs myself, I confess, but they are not even being utilized. And I'm hearing it's an act of God to change this in midstream. I understand it was a compromise. I know they used to take up the whole circle, and now they shifted it, unfortunately, to Maryland Avenue and in front of Joe Budge's house. But the good news is that they are utilizing the space that's a red curb on St. John's Street, and that seems to be adequate. So, I just need your support with SP Plus to say, let's just let them have the red zone and the one spot on North Street. I understand that they feel that this is a compromise, but again, SP Plus is our agent. You know, we direct them, but this apparently because of the, you know, with the state and what have you. And now, since I still have the mic, let's just resolve this so that Maryland Avenue can leave tonight knowing that these cameras are not going to be installed. Again, SP Plus is an agent of ours. We can direct them. That this is just not being received well, and let's just end it here. Okay? Thank you.
You can see it's got no support, so we've got your back. So, we count us. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Mary Adams. I'm the owner of the Annapolis Bookstore. I live in Ward 1 for King Charles Place. I think I'm, have been on this street longer than anybody else. I've been three different locations on Maryland Avenue. Parking is obviously a problem wherever you go, whether you're on Main Street, Maryland Avenue, any historic city. I think, unfortunately, as we keep talking about it, and it's in the paper, we build it up as even more of a problem than it is. We have people who call into the store, either to Annapolis Bookstore or the Yarn Basket. We share a space. And they say they really want to buy something, but they've just heard how awful the parking is. And so, they don't come down. They go to the mall instead, or they go online. The previous administration, or someone in the previous administration, had done a really good map, and I think it's disappeared. But it was in the space where the fire had been on Main Street. And it actually showed people the acreage, the area of downtown historic Annapolis, and they overlaid it to the mall and showed that at the mall, you very seldom get to park right in front of where you're going. You park down at Nordstrom and you walk the whole length. And I think that was a very good public service to show people that, yeah, we've got a problem, but you're walking the same distance when you go out to the mall at Westfield Center. So, I think if we could get, find that map again and maybe educate the public more that you can always find a parking place. You can always find one. It just may not be exactly in front of where you want to go. So, that was one point. A second, and obviously, I back everything that we've said about the cameras. There's no more to be said about that tonight, I don't think. Another issue, though, is that John Sherfle had taken it upon himself with the blessing of, I believe, the previous administration, to put some signs out directing people to Maryland Avenue. And just recently, Gavin, in our new, your new administration, he was told that those had to be taken down. They had to be moved. And so, I think there was one that maybe was considered a bit of a safety issue, but he was told they, all of them had to be moved. So, I think we'd like to have some information on that because that was an expensive venture, and I think John paid for most of it. So, we'd like to know what happened with that. So, that's all I have to say.
I'll follow up on that. Those signs were great. That's why I called you guys the boutique district. They worked.
But why were they moved? Why?
I don't know. We'll follow up on that. Yeah. And I can tell you three initiatives that I'll be working on this year. One is to get the parking spaces in State Circle in the off-hours dedicated to Maryland Ave. The second thing we'll be working on is a head-in parking idea on the third block of Maryland Ave, close to the gate, gate three of the academy. If we can work something out with our property owner, I think we have the potential to get some dedicated head-in parking that could be just for Maryland Ave business owners. And the third idea we're working on is a trolley that called the cross-town flyer. And that trolley will go from gate three of the academy to Maryland Ave, to St. John's, to the visitor's center, and up and down Main Street. And that trolley will go past three empty garages that are empty seven nights a week and all weekend long. So, if we can intersect tourists when they come into town, straight into that trolley, that will get traffic to Maryland Ave, too. So, these are things that we'll be working Thank you so much. You've got a great business community. We're lucky to have you. Thanks for all you do. It's the most, one of the most beautiful places in the city. Please keep up the good work. I promise you, we're going to be there for you. Thank you. Okay, seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
I've made my update on the good news about HACCA and HUD, how HACCA is on the good list now, on the good list now. That's a really great moment for us in the city and Beverly's ability to look forward and show us the promise of what's to come. And I'm also excited that Chief Stokes is the acting city manager today, and I want to give him a big round Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include budget revision request, GT-12-18, transfer from watershed restoration fund balance, transfer to watershed restoration contract services. First readers, 0-9-18, sign regulations, temporary signs, referred to the Planning Commission and the Rules and City Government Committee. 0-10-18, Police Advisory Board, referred to Public Safety Committee and the Rules and City Government. 0-11-18, Stanton Center Lease Agreement, referred to Finance Committee and the Rules and City Government Committee. And 0-12-18, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities, referred to Rules and City Government. And that is the end of the consent calendar items. Is there another one? It's not on my list.
I'm sorry. That's my fault. He did not do it. I did it. I'm so sorry. Under second readers, you have ordinance 0218, Water Service Agreement, and R518, Opposing Oil and Gas Development. And then you have R618, Itinerant Merchant Sales in Historic District. Then, let's see, the next item would be R718, City Sponsored Special Event, and that would be the end of the consent calendar. And once again, I did it. He didn't do it.
Yep, it's not on my calendar either.
My apologies.
This first day, too, Gina.
I was trying so hard to get it.
I appreciate your support, Madam City Clerk.
Let me just tell you, let me just tell you, I started working on that on Friday before I left here to try to get everybody trained, but it just didn't work. So, I'm going to do it on Monday from now.
As the, any objection to the items on the consent calendar? Move approval. Yep, okay. Can I get a second? Hearing no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderwoman Payon?
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendeltrou?
Okay, passed. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda that I have is public hearings beginning with ordinance 0-7-18, Board of Port Wardens Appeals, for the purpose of clarifying the appropriate procedure for an appeal of a decision of the Board of Port Wardens, making minor technical corrections to the rules of procedure for any such appeal and matters generally relating to appealing a decision of the Board of Port Wardens.
Are there any speakers? Okay. We declare the public hearing O-718 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second readers, beginning with ordinance 0-1-18, Public Ethics and Financial Disclosure, for the purpose of updating and amending the Ethics Code of Annapolis pursuant to the passage of HB 1386, effective October 1, 2017, and HB 879, effective January 1, 2019. Clarifying certain definitions, ensuring city officials and employees are aware of the responsibilities pursuant to the Ethics Code, extending conflict of interest provisions to include lobbyists, amending the use of prestige of office restrictions, changing current policy regarding the reviewing and copying of financial disclosure statements by the public, removing the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board members from the financial disclosure filing requirements in accordance with recently enacted state law, making minor editorial changes, and matters generally relating to updating and amending the Ethics Code.
Is there a motion to adopt O-118?
May I have a discussion?
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta, oh, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Let's start discussion, yeah? Alderwoman Henson?
Is there anyone that can provide greater context for the, the page that we got here has an amendment proposed by Alderman, then Alderman Budge, I guess, that page seven, line 23, I believe it falls in, there's the suggestion to move to amend to say that not for compensation can a former official or employee assist or represent any party in a case that they had substantial dealings with while they were with the city. I'd like to understand that better.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we had Mr. Dozel and Mr. Clay, who are the Chair and Vice Chair of the Ethics Commission, come before the Rules and City Government Committee. And I would ask them to come forward to address all of the amendments that you see in this legislation. I asked Ms. Green to pass out documents to us because I wasn't sure they would be in, but gentlemen, if you might come forward-
Please come forward, thank you.
And they will walk us, Mr. Mayor, if I might, walk us through all of the changes. And I'll let them give an introduction as to why these changes are necessary.
Two of the hardest-working men in show business right here.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We need to adopt the underlying ordinance first on second reader, and then we can talk about the amendments.
We already did.
Correct?
We just voted on it, didn't we?
We did vote on it.
We voted on a second, and Alderwoman hits a start discussion.
That was a motion to be considered. That wasn't-
No, it was adopted on second reader. That was the motion. Not, adopted means it's adopted as second, and at second, it's time for discussion. That's where we are.
So, we have not, we've not had a motion to make the amendments. We just have the-
Right, a motion and a second. That's it. And that's discussion, and you have to amend at that point.
But we still need a motion for the amendments, so we can discuss the amendments. That's what we're-
You don't have to adopt the amendments to discuss them. You're at discussion point of the meeting because you have a second.
I believe your question was regarding Amendments 4 and 5. Is that correct?
They are, listen, they're not numbers on the document that I have, but it's titled Alderman's Amendment Inserted Page 7, lines 21 and 29. I'm not sure how that aligns with the other-
If I might, I think it would be less confusing because there are an awful lot of changes if they are allowed to just go through the entire document. Alderman Budge did come to the meeting, and he did make some recommendations, which the committee, I believe, has also endorsed as their recommendations. So, if we will give them an opportunity to go through all of them, I think that would benefit us all. Mr. Mayor, if that's the-
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, is that our-
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
I will go through the document with the changes to the current code and explain why they were proposed. And the first change is on page three, oops, excuse me, page two, line 35, which is an editorial change, making, adding the word "D." Page three, lines 24 and 25. Are we there?
Yep.
Is to include exchange-traded funds as we also, as we have included mutual funds as being non-reportable on financial disclosure forms, and that was a requirement of the state. On lines 41 through 44, this was a recommendation of the Ethics Commission and was accepted by the Rules Committee. And the difficulty here was that we were including in family, in immediate family, siblings, parents, children, and their spouses. And we received many complaints that how are, how am I supposed to fill in a financial disclosure form and tell you what my son, who is 40 years old, is invested in? So, we changed that to really limit to the primary family members. Any questions on that? And in immediate family, we included anyone living in the official's residence. We did that because we had a case a few years ago where we had a conflict of interest with the live-in friend of a person being awarded a contract by that person. So, we wanted to settle that. Any questions on that?
I just have a quick question, but I'm not sure the context-
I have, I just have a quick question, but I'm not sure the context in which it's later used, but qualified relative versus mean spouse, siblings, parents, children, and their spouses, um, is that, compared to immediate family, where it says it means a spouse and dependent children, uh, and anyone else living in an official's residence, is, does qualify, does the use of qualified relative in the course of this bill, um, jibe with the idea of, uh, of the chi, of the children being dependent or not dependent, uh, accord, in accordance with those definitions in thirteen and fourteen?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And there, these terms are used in varying ways throughout the code, and this makes it clear, particularly relative to financial, uh, disclosure requirements.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Alderman Henson?
I wanna, based on the city's attorney's question, make sure I understand. So, are there two classes of children? Qualifying relative, when you say that and mean child, you mean any person that is your child born or, or naturalized? And then by immediate family, when you refer to a child in the context of an immediate family, you mean only dependent children?
Living in the residence, that is correct.
So, there are two classes of children?
Yes.
And they have significance in different ways, or it's not interchangeable?
The key difference was immediate family has financial reporting requirements for anyone in your immediate family. Uh, and qualified relatives are in other parts of the code as far as, um...
Might relate to, to the manner which the, the, the person's interests might be, they might have a conflict or something in terms of, uh, the relationship to their children, whether they're adult or minors? Is that, is that how it's used later on?
No.
Okay, okay, how is it used later on?
My recollection, and I should look exactly, is qualified relative is rel, help me out here.
It's relative to parts of the code to talk about, contracts and conflicts of interest, whereas the immediate family is more related towards the financial disclosure, because for, right now, I would have to put down my brothers and my sister-in-law, what they do, even though they're completely separate from me as a, as a city official, um, as well as we added in the, anyone else in the official residence, because we're trying to, um, take into account that the way that the family unit is evolving in our country, where not everybody in the same household, might be, um, married by law, uh, but there still could be a conflict of interest, like the Chair said about, uh, awarding contracts. So, we're trying to hone in on what the real conflict of interest would be without bringing in a lot of, um, extraneous people, like Alderman Peon has seven siblings, some live across the country, why do we care where they get their income if it doesn't affect his, his, his stature as an Alderman?
Right. Thank you.
I think we agreed more than we thought we did.
Page four, editorial change on line forty-one. Page five, line five through eight. Basically, this is a requirement for the Ethics Commission to meet with the Director of Human Resource, I should say, the Human Resources Manager at least once per year to ensure that, uh, training is provided for new employees and new appointees, and that we're in agreement as far as what that training is.
And that's an upgrade from before, it was kind of, uh, open-ended?
Yep.
So, we're putting more requirements on ourselves to be more proactive with the city, um, HR Director.
And then lines twelve and fifteen, uh, the changes were to, um, codify current practice, that is, either the Ethics Commission or the city attorney can report to the State Ethics Commission annually as far as being in compliance with state, uh, state law requirements.
I just...
One of your new duties.
I was just curious what prompted the addition of our city attorney, just, um...
Um, the city attorney has been in the last three to four years providing those, uh, reports.
Okay.
So, this basically codified that it could be either the city attorney or the Ethics Commission.
All right, thanks.
Page six, um, regards a reg, regulated lobbyist, and that was a requirement for, for, I should say, from the State Ethics Commission and state law. And we do have one or two, uh, registered lobbyists in the city, so we had to include that change. Page seven. Which was your question, uh, why we included for, uh, compensation as far as in the post-employment limitations. We were, the old, uh, the current code is stricter than what is recommended in the state Model A and Model B, like, uh, requirements. Um, if you're not familiar with it, the State Ethics Commission and state law provides recommendations for municipalities, uh, for Model A, which is larger municipalities, and Model B, which is smaller municipalities. And we have to meet those requirements, but we may exceed those requirements if we so decide within the city. This was a case where the current code was stricter than what was in the model code, and Alderman, uh, excuse me, retired Alderman Bush, uh, Budge, had suggested this change because he wanted to provide some assistance without compensation, and he could not do that, uh, under the current, uh, ethics law.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, just to expand on that, um, it was all, it was, it was essentially a bit too broad, so it even prevented former employees, so for example, um, you know, my case, if I, if I would have worked significantly on any issue, be it greenscape or something, community beautification, I would be prohibited under the Ethics Code to help out my community association to do such a simple, like, activity like that. So, this follows the state language, state model, and, and, and search that compensation because it, it makes more sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, on, on page seven, lines thirty to thirty-five, that language by amendment is being moved to, amendment three is being moved to the previous page six, um, on lines twenty-five to twenty-nine, and that was a state requirement. Editorial change is at the bottom of cha, uh, page seven, line forty-six. And lines one, two, three, on page eight. The paragraph on the public record and what the city attorney's office is to do as far as maintaining records and allowing public examination of financial disclosure forms, was, these changes were to codify what the lo, what the law office is currently, how they handle requests for reviewing financial disclosure forms. Uh, the biggest, uh, change here is that, uh, you, you, or the financial, the, the person who's completed a financial disclosure form now is required to be notified when anyone comes in to review their financial disclosure form, which is a public record. Uh, that's the gist of these changes, uh, under public record.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, the, in, uh, lines nineteen and twenty, I think it is, is, um, is the intent to eliminate the requirement for the city attorney's office to cop, to make copies of, uh, the documents and then charge a reasonable administrative fee? Is, was that the intent of that?
The state code allows that to be done as far as copying and charging for copies. The practice of the law office has been not to provide copies of any documents and, uh, simply to make a record that they were made available.
All right, okay, thank you.
So, this was to follow what the current procedure was.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and also just to expand on that, um, it was an effort to try to protect, and you're gonna speak in as a form, well, current, I guess, former city employee, but, uh, to protect city employees, um, in the sense that somebody, it prevents somebody from going in there, copying the records, and posting them up online. They can still get access to them through a Public Information Act request, um, but it's, it's just, uh, helps to, because there was some concern amongst employees of that, so, well, thank you for addressing that.
Thank you again. There was a state requirement in that section, and that was after January first, twenty nineteen, that we, uh, must redact the ho, the home addresses of anyone who's filed a financial disclosure form. Let me know if I missed anything. Page fourteen. That was a suggested change by the State Ethics Commission, an editorial change. Page fifteen, uh, line ten and line twenty to twenty-three was in response to state law, which requires alcohol beverage control board members to file financial disclosure forms with the state of Maryland, and therefore, we no longer are requiring that they also file financial disclosure forms with the city. Uh, and we, and, and because of that law, we're basically removed from the monitoring of alcohol beverage and control board, uh, conflicts of interest. The state has taken that over as a state ethics commission.
And, and, and they're governed by the state alcohol, uh, state liquor law, essentially? Is that, is that where that came from? Like, what used to be Article two B, uh, and is now the, um, and is the liquor law for, um, for the state, is that where that originated?
Uh, no, it was specifically by, by the State Ethics Commission.
Okay.
They took over the responsibility that we had in the city ethics commi, uh, uh, commission, and all other municipal, uh, uh, ethics commissions.
And county.
And counties, I should say.
And it's limited only to the alcohol beverage control board members?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I believe one of the counties had a problem, uh, and the state basically clamped down on everyone.
Okay, thank you.
There are two other on that page editorial changes, on lines thirty-one and thirty-four, but they're minor editorial changes.
It looks like you added the word "in," and you, and you changed fifteen, the number to, it written out.
Correct. Yes. Thank you. Where am I? Page seventeen? No.
Sixteen.
Page sixteen, lines twenty-nine, thirty-three through thirty-five. Uh, this was a state requirement, um, and regard, regarding, uh, regulated lobbyists. Page seventeen, line sixteen and twenty-two through twenty-four, editorial change, and then state law requirement that we could, uh, that regulated lobbyist spouses had to file financial disclosure forms under circum, circumstances, state law requirement. And we got to the last page, page eighteen. Lines ten and eleven were to require financial disclosure forms for HACA appointees within fifteen days of their appointment, and that's to be consistent with other parts of the code that require, uh, financial disclosure forms to be filed within fifteen days of anyone's appointment. And then, the line twenty-three, we had, on the statement of compliance, which we require of boards and commission members and ad hoc committees and so forth, to acknowledge that they understand their potential conflicts of interest as officials of the city, um, we had gotten complaints that we were being, uh, overly, um, forceful in, in saying, swearing and affirming under penalty perjury, and, and we agreed with the criticism, and that's why we've changed the oath to just affirming that they are aware and understand the provisions of the city ethics code. The reason for the statement of compliance is that members of, I should, members of boards and commissions, while being appointed and sworn in by the mayor, swear that they will follow the laws of the city, really didn't touch upon their ethical responsibilities as being officials within the city, and, and that's why we require, require a statement of compliance to be filed on a one-time basis. That is, when they're appointed to a commission, they file this statement, they sign a statement of compliance, and that really highlights to them that they have, uh, conflict of interest, uh, in their positions as officials. That's the, uh, sum total.
Thank you, thank you so much for, any questions? Thank you so much for cleaning that up, this is the sort of stuff that keeps this job exciting. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman Lason?
Alderman Attorney?
Just for levity, can I tell Alderman Budge that he's not in violation for giving me advice these last few months?
No.
Only after you pass the ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
Alderman Peon?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to co-sponsor the amendments, and I would also, um, I guess, are we on the second reader? Do we need a, a motion at this point?
I'm just gonna put it there.
And will we adopt the amendments?
Second. That was the second.
Any opposed?
You were given a piece of paper today to honor that.
Yeah.
That's not the same as your, that's, we're adopting the ones that are attached to the legislature.
Thank you.
This is just for clarification, that's where I'm being...
Most, most of them are the same.
The Rules and City Government Committee? Yeah. You're trying to get our word count followed? That was not... Right. So, the Rules and City Government Committee did give a favorable recommendation to all of the amendments as presented. So, the, um, amendments to our, the city annual committee was, um, moved by Alderman?
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Just, I'll make sure I understand, the one that's attached to it is a, is a one-pager, correct?
So, um, it's listed in your, um, on your iPad and, um, on the legislation, that's all one eighteen, State Ethics and Rules Committee.
It, this, what I'm looking at doesn't have everything that's on this paper here.
No, that's, you don't need that paper.
So, are we not voting on these tonight?
When they had, when this legislation was on... When they had, when this legislation was on first reader, these were the amendments, we don't, we don't want to leave them, because they're incorporated in what the Rules Committee adopted and attached to your, um, legislation.
We're saying that all of the ones in here are in this one-pager that's attached.
Right, if it's, if it's actually, well, no.
No, I had, uh, Ms. Green hand out the amendments that were presented, so this is inclusive of all of the amendments, or at least ninety percent of the amendments that were presented. The sheet she's referring to has only three amendments on it, okay? They are included in the longer document, but they just went through every one of them, even editorial amendments that are not on here.
The amendment by Alderman Budge, I don't see that being lined out or changed in the text of the ordinance, and I don't know that, it's here?
It is, under page seven.
Thank you, thank you.
It is here, page seven, um, li, line twenty-
Twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
So, this is-
Twenty-one through twenty-nine, yeah.
Absent just the editorial ones and the explanation?
Mm-hmm.
Got it?
Sorry, um, city clerk.
Thank you, pardon my interruption.
Yes, it is.
Alright, is there a motion to adopt O-118 as amended, on second reader?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adopt O-18 on third reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pinalcha?
Aye.
All passed, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate all your hard work, thank you.
You did a great job, thanks.
Alright, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Based on the information before me, Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
Is there anything else for good order?
Um, just for informational purposes, the annual reports that were due to be submitted to the city clerk's office by, um, January fifteenth are attached to your, your agenda, so you can pull it open, and all of the reports, um, are listed, and we have annual reports from all of the boards and commissions, so if you have any questions regarding that, the contact information for those individual boards and commissions is in the, uh, memos, okay?
Clarification, uh, to the committee agenda, to your agenda for tonight's meeting?
Oh.
There's a link under, for the good of the order, it's ID forty-nine eighteen, Boards and Commissions' annual reports, if you open that up, it's the summary of all of the city's boards and commissions. Oh, thank you.
So, we can make sure everybody has received it at the same time, okay?
Okay, with no other items on the agenda, I entertain a motion, adjourn, is there a second?
I move that we adjourn.
Alright, who's for a pint? Meeting is adjourned.